To Monday, December 4th, 2023. This is the City Council meeting. Our invocation will be given by Shirley Murdoch, member of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, and Pastor Douglas Galvin of Generation Church. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we're gathered together this evening in the attitude of a City Council meeting, and we are so grateful to have a mayor and a city council that recognizes the value of beginning their meetings with a prayer. And, dear Father, at this Christmas season, we wish to express gratitude unto Thee for the birth of Thy Son and His willingness to come to earth and to serve. And we pray that we might pause in our daily lives and strive to live our lives as He would have us live them. We ask blessings upon the City Council and the mayor, that they might give them guidance and direction and inspiration to make the best decisions for the citizens of Independence, for the business owners, those that own establishments, and also to be cognizant of the homeless and the poor, and that they may be inspired as how to best assist them with their problems. We love Thee and give Thee our devotion, and thank Thee for the many blessings poured out upon us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
We've got one more prayer, Shirley.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No worries. Douglas Galvin's going to come. Two prayers.
Señor Jesús, gracias te damos en esta noche por el privilegio que nos da de estar en este lugar, por el liderazgo de la Ciudad de Independencia. Te damos gracias, señor, porque tú eres bueno, porque tú has puesto las autoridades en este lugar para que embellezcan aún más nuestra comunidad. Bendice, señor, a todo el equipo, que todos podamos orar por ellos para que ellos puedan tomar las mejores decisiones, señor, para sacar adelante a esta comunidad. Bendice los que cual, todos los planes que traen, todas las decisiones que tengan que tomar sean dirigidas por Ti, señor Jesús. Sé tú tomando control de ellos, de esta reunión. Pongo a todos los que están aquí, hombres y mujeres, señor, que puedan ponerse de acuerdo en los negocios, señor, a presentar. Bendícelos, en el nombre de Jesús. Oramos. Amén.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
And Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. We have a quorum. Members of the body, I would like to ask for a suspension of the rules to do two things. One is to recognize Councilmember Hobart for kind of a moment of personal privilege, and then also bring the presentation resolution for the I-Star right after Councilmember Hobart's remarks. So if I could have a motion and a second to do that, so we can move those two items further up on the agenda, I'd be grateful.
So moved.
We've got a motion. We've got a second. And Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
And Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Councilmember Hobart, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep it brief. As we all know, we have entertained nominations to fill the vacancy for the Third District Councilperson seat left by Mr. Steinmeier's resignation. We had two volunteers, and therefore two nominations for that recently at a council meeting. Mr. Scott Roberson, a former council member, and Ms. Paula Martin, a dedicated citizen who also serves on the Parks Commission. Since those nominations, both nominees have withdrawn their candidacy, and therefore, at this time, the Third District seat will remain vacant. We thought it was important, obviously, I've discussed this individually, as have you, Mr. Mayor, with, we've all, you know, discussed it individually, but, so the folks out there know, Councilmember McCandless and Councilmember Fears, both at-large council members, both reside in the Third District, and they're more than happy and willing to serve your needs in the four months until an election takes place and a new Third District council member is elected. And on behalf of the council, we certainly want to thank profusely the service offered by Ms. Paula Martin and by Mr. Scott Roberson, both known in our community as good citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So I know we had two nominations. Would the nominees make a motion? And let me ask you this, Mr. Coover, should we actually withdraw those nominations publicly here to do that?
Well, Mr. Hobart has made the announcement that the candidates have withdrawn, but yes, if the two members who nominated them wanted to withdraw those nominations, that would sort of close the loop on this.
Okay. Why don't we do that and?
So I'll withdraw my nomination of Scott Roberson to serve in the Third District.
Okay.
I withdraw my nomination of Paula Martin.
Okay, so the nominations for Scott Roberson and Paula Martin have in fact been withdrawn, so if I understand it, Mr. Coover, that will close that matter, if I'm clear.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The next item that we have, and then we'll have citizens' requests, is a presentation for a resolution for the I-Star recipient, and this is for Carlos Badia, and I've actually worked with Carlos. So Carlos, you've always done a great job when I needed help, and I certainly, as you well know, don't know anything about technology, so thank God you work for the city. But here are the reasons for your nomination, and I think they're stellar. Among the myriad of reasons for Carlos' nominations, there are two that particularly stand out. Simply put, his customer care, which I think I agree with is excellent, and his work ethic. As the many COI employees can attest to, Carlos not only displays, I love this description, wizard-like technology skills. I love that. I want to see you with, you know, wizards, a wand the next time. Thank you for that. Yeah, the wizard's wand the next time. So you have wizard-like skills for technology and knowledge, and innate ability to continually provide top-notch customer service. When the most aggravating issues when working with technology is when it doesn't work for some reason, how do I get it to work? And with Carlos on the job, that aggravation is in fact removed. He will quickly and professionally handle any help desk ticket, and I can attest personally on that, and I know a number of my fellow councilmembers can do that too. He is often there and says, hey, I will help you while I'm here, or in many cases, you've came right over to help me, so I cannot say thank you enough. This person who nominated you said, I have yet to experience a situation where he was unable to provide speedy solution and a friendly attitude towards his service. Carlos displays all the characteristics that you want in a coworker and a City of Independence employee. So with that, and this person also went on and said, the most notable thing about Carlos is when Carlos is willing and taught me not only the technical skills, but also the extensive knowledge about the city itself. And the best part of that, he continues to share his knowledge to this day. So with that, Carlos, we want to recognize you as the I-Star Award winner for December, and we have a resolution for you here, so come on forward.
Yes.
And Chris, if you can.
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
We didn't actually vote on the I-Star resolution.
We did not.
Do that, thank you.
And that is, we do need to do that, so thank you very much for that, and we'll come back to citizens' requests in just a moment. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
We've got a motion and a second for Carlos. Very, very good. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Hobart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And congratulations, your resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, before we take citizens' comments?
Yes.
I would like to be sure we take a moment to welcome Suzanne Holland, who is our new city clerk, and we are delighted that she comes to us with a background in public service and incredible administrative skills. She will do very well by this city, and we're delighted to have you. Thank you for joining us.
And I want to also echo that. You've already handled some difficult tasks with professionalism and elegance, and so thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you as you go forward. So well done. Thank you. Chris, please forgive me.
Good.
Any more resolutions? All right, very good. Chris, please state your name and your address and your reason for coming to speak.
My name's Chris Becker. I live at 3101 Santa Fe Terrace, and I'm calling, I came to talk to you guys about the speed bump project we have getting ready to happen on, I guess, Santa Fe Terrace. We started in '22 trying to, got with the city, they came out, did their traffic study on it, and, you know, determined that the area, you know, was qualified to have basically speed bumps installed because of the, you've got traffic going through there at, I mean, up to 70 miles an hour, and it's a 25 mile an hour zone. So with the average speeds and everything, they said, we're going to go ahead and, you know, do something. So last spring, we, or I guess it was probably about a year ago, we got information from the traffic engineer that said, you know, we've got the project slated for '23, we're going to do it during the paving season, and it just never happened. So, you know, we, I called Public Works and discussed with them, and they said it was never, never really on the books to do. So now we're, you know, two years past this. The study came out and said, you know, if we're not going to, that they needed to do, you know, stepped-up radar enforcement, but I don't really think that's in the cards just because I think the police department's really got bigger problems than speeding of an evening, so I'm just, I'm concerned we're going to have a fatality accident somewhere along there. Both my neighbors, or immediate neighbors to the north and south, both had property damage from cars losing control. The neighbors directly to the south had a car rollover that landed so close to the house that broke windows out. And as it is now, there's no sidewalks, so the neighbors' kids are, the school bus stops right out in front of my house, they're walking through the backyards of those properties along there just so they can stay off the road. So I just, just concerned that, you know, we, it's just not being addressed, and, you know, I haven't had real good communication with the city regarding where we're at on the project. I have been with, speaking with Dan Hobart, and he has been very helpful and done everything he could for me. I would also like to kind of hats off to the Parks Department. There was a lot going on down in that park, and with like speeds and cars in and out all night long, and the Parks Department, they came out and looked at the problem, and they installed like eight speed bumps down through there, and it's made, it's made a dramatic, dramatic improvement, and they did it in a very short order of time, and I really do appreciate that. So that's all I have, and appreciate your time.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Next is Jackie Davis. So Jackie, please come forward and give us your name and address, please, and then you have five minutes for your presentation.
Jackie Davis, 1725 Harvard Avenue, Independence, 64052. I'm talking about Independence then and now. Years ago, and I guess it was before any of your times, there used to be a guy named Joe who drove around the city. Do you remember him? And he had a loudspeaker either on his van or his pickup. This guy loved his country, and he loved Independence, and anytime there was going to be a vote, he was there to tell you, you know, all about it and what we should do and what we shouldn't do, and who to vote for and all that, not only for local, but also all over. So anyway, a few weeks ago, somebody came, several people came up here and wanted, and wanted to be against having those apartments built in their neighborhood. They don't want that in their neighborhood, but you guys voted for it, except one. And I went home crying because I know just exactly how it feels to the city to go ahead and have something built in your neighborhood when it's wrong, and I know for a fact, if it was in, next door to you or across the street from you or in your backyard, none of you would ever vote for it, but it's okay for the rest of us. I just think it's wrong. They don't want that in their neighborhood, and, by the way, Blue Springs doesn't have the room for their, their kids that will be there. They've already said that. Anyway, I just wanted to say, you are voted by the people. You should listen to all of us, not just for the big money people, not for the people that run big businesses and want this and that. You should consider that if it was in your neighborhood, would you want that? And you people don't, and I just, I just hope that when elections come, people remember how you voted, and, you know, and vote for the people that are there for us, not for just the big businesses or who's got the most money. That's wrong, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much. Next up, Kenneth Love. Kenneth? And you have five minutes.
Kenneth Love, 16808 East George Franklin Drive, Independence, Missouri. Well, Mr. Mayor, City Council, it's happened again. What I wanted to talk about, I got to change a gear and move on to something different. But I'm going to make it short, sweet, to first thank Mayor Protemp, Councilman Hobart, for pointing out the situation over the vacant seat. I'd also like to thank at-large councilmen's and councilone, Mr. Fears and Ms. McCandless, for agreeing to step up for the Third District. But now that I've had to change gears of what I really wanted to talk about, I'm sure the chief of police don't know this, because this is just coming out the blue, it happened today. I would like to congratulate his men that showed up today off of 40 Highway within seven minutes. That was how quick it was. There was a child running around in a diaper, in a diaper. That was it. Luckily, the child's mother came out, young mother, and found her baby running in the street. But again, thanks to IPD, they was there, they questioned, and the child is home safely with the mother. You can let your officer know that was out there, because I was there working, I seen what happened. Again, thank you to the Independence Police Department for being quick response. Last, thank the mayor, the council, for allowing the Hispanic church to come up here at the beginning of our meetings and say prayer. Now we hope we grow more people, bigger, on Monday nights for our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Love. Next is Lynn Baker. Lynn, please come forward and state your name and your address, and you have five minutes.
I'm Lynn Baker. I live at 19116 East 19th Street Court South. We have those kind of addresses in Independence, and 64057. I'm here because I understand that a second reading of the proposal to destroy city property is on the agenda for tonight, city property that is deemed unsafe. Without, the proposal would be, there would be no public comment. My only concern is, I'd like to draw your attention to the importance of historically significant buildings, which I didn't see any, any words pertaining to that. The Mil Office, I'm a member of the Tourism Commission, the Mil Office was destroyed on Sunday. I had not a clue. And not that I'd been parading up and down to save it, I'm not saying that, and I'm not saying, let's destroy K-Marts, that's fabulous, but I hate to think of important historic buildings being destroyed without any public comment. So I don't know if it's in the wording, I just wanted to draw your attention to that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, and this brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Thank you. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for the recommendations to approve, the recommendations from the city manager. Any councilmembers like to pull any items for consideration separately?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Can you please pull item 23-797?
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'd like to pull item number two, please.
Item number two. Okay. Anyone else other considerations? Okay, we're going to pull 23797 and item number two. Any further discussion on any of the other items? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the recommendations by the city manager are approved, six in favor and zero opposed. Councilmember Stewart, I'll come to you first, 23797, and you have the floor, and please proceed.
Thank you. So this is a resolution dissolving the Independence Economic Development and Incentive Commission. Mr. City Manager, can you kind of give us an overview of why city staff, or maybe even you believe this needs to be resolved, how it will affect things going forward? I've received some feedback on this, and I would just like, you know, some type of reasoning behind it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity to explain, Councilmember Stewart. Going back to when the Economic Development Incentive Commission was created, so state statute requires any municipality that is going to be contemplating tax increment financing, or TIF as we all more commonly know it, that requires the municipality to form a TIF Oversight Committee that would review the proposed TIF before it comes to the governing body for consideration. And that gives the other taxing jurisdictions in that area, like school boards and libraries and the county, the opportunity to weigh in and contemplate a proposed tax increment finance project before it comes before the local governing body. We decided several years ago to try a similar concept, but with all economic incentives, so community improvement districts, neighborhood improvement districts, our Chapter 353s and 100s. The idea being that this would give the other taxing jurisdictions an opportunity to weigh in on proposed incentives that would impact them prior to that coming before the city council. Conversely, though, what we have noticed, the city staff, is this is presenting an impediment to development, and one of the things we hear loud and clear from the council is to make it easier to do business and to do development in Independence. This is not a hurdle that any other community, certainly in the metro, and none that I am aware of statewide, has this requirement. So we are placing an additional impediment to development and Independence that other communities don't have, which makes us at a competitive disadvantage. Moreover, one of the things we've noticed is that even though we've provided that forum for the taxing jurisdictions, they often are not utilizing it. So we're either seeing very low turnout at the meeting among some of the taxing jurisdictions, or most recently, taxing jurisdictions that opted to abstain from the vote and not take a formal position. So it seems as if this is just a hurdle that we're presenting without really getting much benefit from it. Now, that said, the state statutes behind all of these incentives still require a public hearing to be had anytime an economic incentive is being contemplated. So whether a citizen or a formal representative of one of those taxing jurisdictions had an opinion, they would have the freedom and the ability and the right to come before the council and share their opinion prior to a vote of the council. So there will still be a mechanism to allow for public comment by either private citizen or a representative of the taxing jurisdiction, but we are removing one of the impediments, and frankly, one of the things that's slowing down development in Independence.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
So I just want to be sure that I am clear, that everybody listening is clear. We're the only city that you know of that has this particular mechanism, and all of the other cities use public comment opportunities as their mechanism for input. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I know the city attorney also, through his municipal law firm, also represents other cities, so I think he could verify that for us as well.
That's correct. I'm not aware of any other cities that have a body and a requirement like this. That's correct.
And just so that everybody understands, can you define what taxing jurisdictions are?
Yes.
So we know who's either abstaining or not?
Absolutely. So depending on where the project would occur, the local school district would be one of the taxing jurisdictions, the county, in our case, Jackson County, Mid-Continent Public Library, and then each of the municipalities, in this case, Independence, has representatives appointed to that review committee as well.
And so if we were, so you've talked about TDDs and CIDs, et cetera, but for actual true TIF in the clearest definition of that, would there still be an option for public hearing? We could certainly bring it to a study session. Those opportunities still exist.
So we are still required by state statute to have a TIF commission, so that group will continue to exist and function so long as Missouri state statute has that requirement. This would only be for the other economic incentives, where yes, there will be an opportunity for public comment at the council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. Excellent explanation for that. I too had spoken to one of the commission members, and we had a good conversation about why we were reaching this decision, but I think it's also important to note that under citizen comments, the apartment complex that was voted on several weeks ago fell into the Independence Economic Development Incentive. fell into the, um, Independence Economic Development Incentive Commission. Blue Springs School District has a seat at that table. They chose not to take a position on this, um, development at all. There has been no formal inquiry or discussion to the City of Independence at that time regarding any type of enhancement to the, the kids that would flow into their school district. They did not do their due diligence. I won't pile on to the strong arguments and strong rhetoric that I provided at that night, but Blue Springs School District chose not to take a position on the apartment complex that was voted on. And this is one of the reasons why, in my mind, when we invite these taxes and jurisdictions to come and be a part, they can take a stand, they can discuss, and we can work through whatever problems they might have. But they have chosen not to do that, which is very disappointing.
Anyone else other further discussion? Seeing?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
My apologies, very briefly, if I may address the city manager.
Sure. Please proceed.
Uh, I, I just wanted to thank you, Mr. Walker and your staff, for continuing to look for efficiencies and ways to streamline development. Uh, the success we're having recently, uh, is in part, uh, in large part due to your staff's efforts. These kind of, um, uh, changes are gonna be necessary for us to continue to grow, I believe. So, thank you very much, and I will continue to, um, uh, encourage you to push your staff to find more. Thank you. I'll be voting to, um, I'll be voting no on this, or voting yes on it, to disband it, dissolve it. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
I actually failed earlier to make a motion for approval on this. So, I make a motion for approval on 23-797.
Okay, we've got a motion, and we've got a second. Any further discussion on this item before we vote?
I, I guess I'll go ahead and weigh in. Uh, I appreciate Councilmember Hobart's comments, cuz I, I agree as well as that the, you know, the concerns that we hear sometimes about development and about, um, city bureaucracy and, and things is, uh, you know, there, that is necessary in some ways, and yet, at the other hand, we wanna streamline that process as much as possible, uh, and still have opportunity for, you know, plenty of input from all affected parties. So, um, I appreciate the, the work done by staff on this as well, so.
And Mr. City Manager, uh, obviously, this has been out there. Have you seen any of the taxing jurisdictions reach out to you to say they have any concerns about us, uh, disbanding this?
I have had no, um, outreach from anybody on this.
Okay. So, typically, if someone has a concern with you, like the school district about a tax or things like that, or you, you hear right away, if I'm correct?
Yes, we usually hear if there's concerns or opposition on an issue, yes, sir.
But you haven't heard any, okay?
No comments.
Very good, okay. Uh, anyone else other further discussion? Thank you, Mr. City Manager. All right, uh, with that being said, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 23797.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Stewart, I'm sorry. McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And Resolution 23797 is in fact approved. That takes us back to, uh, item number two. Councilmember Fears, if you can make a motion, we'll get a second, get that out of the way, and then you can have the floor.
Yeah, so, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this for two weeks.
Okay. Can we get a second?
Second.
And please proceed.
So, reasoning for that is, I had discussion in, in my, um, regular meeting with city manager about some details on this particular, um, item. I think, uh, he indicated there's some ways to, uh, find, sharpen the pencil a little bit on this and maybe reduce the cost a little bit, or at least, um, provide some additional information. So, that's my reason for making a motion.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to postpone, any discussion on the postponement motion? Okay. Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please take the roll to postpone for two, uh, for two weeks. Item number two on the agenda.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes, and item number two is postponed for two weeks to get additional information, if I'm hearing you correctly. Okay? Very good. This brings us... If I can get my paperwork to qualify, um, to the regular agenda, we got a public hearing. This brings us to our first public hearing. We'll open the public hearing. Uh, Mr. Royo, if I could have, uh, the count, the city clerk just read the first section of that, and then we'll proceed with you. Thank you.
A public hearing for the application by John Karns requesting a rezoning from C2 General Commercial to I1 Industrial for the property located at 420 South M291 Highway.
Thank you, Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Rick Arroyo, the Assistant Community Development Director here at the city. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission on October 24th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. This is a property at 420 M291 Highway. It's across the street from, and a little bit north of that, um, Space Center Executive Park, the Cave Complex. It's currently Zone C2. General Commercial, the applicant wishes to rezone this to I1 Industrial for the purpose of a CDL truck driving training course. I have no new information to provide.
Thank you very much. And this will close the public hearing. Um, and Madam City Clerk, please read the 23111, please.
An ordinance approving a rezoning from District C2 General Commercial to District I1 Industrial for the property at 420 South M291 Highway in Independence, Missouri, second reading.
Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Um, I'm, I'm trying to find, what exactly are they wanting to put there when they were saying rezoning industrial?
So, from what the applicant's description is, essentially, what they wanna do is be able to take that area, kinda flatten it out. It would require stormwater mitigation, and then use it basically for a truck, uh, training area. So, basically, several vehicles or several trucks at the same time. Um, they cannot store any trucks on the property. Um, it would not be allowed for that, but that is the intent of the applicant.
Um, did they indicate how many trucks they would have, um, at maximum?
I believe it was like two trucks at a time. It was not a very large operation that they're referring to.
And if they ever wanted to change that, would they have to come back and request to have more trucks?
They would, like I said, they wouldn't be able to store anything on there. They could potentially have more vehicles, but that's not what the applicant has suggested here.
Does this board... Did anybody come out in opposition of this to you or at the planning and zoning?
I do not believe anybody came out for opposition to this.
Does this border any residential property?
So, there is some residential property that is owned to the south of this. It is not actually residential. There is some residential to the west, about 300 feet along Lacy Road. There is several parcels in between this one and those residential properties.
Is there gonna be kind of have a barrier put up between this property and the residential property?
So, currently, the site has some tree buffering, uh, but there would be between the residential, there is required buffering between the residential. Um, to the west side, there doesn't necessarily have to be. It could be however a condition added to that, if, if so wished.
Okay. Um... How would I go out making that a condition? Do I make a motion for it, or? For the buffer, you said on the east side?
It would be the west side of the property.
The west side?
Yeah.
Mr., how would I make that? Could I make a motion to make that a condition?
Mr. Cover, if we start adjusting this at this point, what's the proper procedure for us to follow? Cuz it sounds like it'd be an amendment to the, uh, to the reading, and we have to have amendment to it. What's your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, if you wanted to, to make that motion to, I mean, it would have to, um...
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed. Mr. Hobart, did you ask for, to be recognized?
Yeah, I was, I guess I was kinda waiting for them. My thought was, would we have to send it back to the Planning Commission to make adjustments to the plan before we could, and then have to reconsider it?
I think that's what they're discussing right now, so we'll find out what the, what the ruling is.
Okay. Uh, thank you for giving us a moment. Your, your two options are to make the rezoning, make your affirmative vote conditional on them adding that buffering, or sending it back to the Planning Commission for, for the review.
When you say buffering, what do you guys usually describe, like a fence? I mean, that's my understanding of it, or?
It can be a fence, or it can be vegetation.
Okay. I, you know, disregard, I'll just go with it as it is. I don't have any, quite more questions. I don't think it'll be fine. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Cover, please proceed.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember McCandless.
Please proceed.
Um, I heard from a couple of neighbors to this space who are really concerned about consistent driving of semi-trucks in this small area for training, and they're concerned a lot about noise, and they're concerned about pollution. Um, so, for that reason, I'm, I'm gonna be voting no. But, Mr. Walker, I, I wanna hear how something like this fits into our action plan and development. Is this something that you feel like will be lost? If you could speak to that?
So, um, I wanna start by saying, when staff and community development or planners review this, they look strictly through the lens of, um, compatibility with the, um, Comprehensive Development Plan. Um, and, you know, this, this was deemed to be, um, compatible with the, um, uh, Comprehensive Development Plan, pardon me. The other guiding document that I, this council has taken very seriously is your, uh, Action Plan for 2023-24. And in that document, it talks about, uh, one of your outcomes is a well-planned city, and specifically, and they're talking about, um, you know, things that are becoming in the sense that when you travel through main corridors and main thoroughfares of the city, they are, um, becoming of the city that you want, that they present well, that it gives a positive impression of the community you want to see. Now, obviously, that is a value judgment by any person, but certainly in your roles of the council, I would encourage you to think about is, you know, the tens of thousands of vehicles that travel through that corridor every day. Is that in keeping and consistent with the visual appearance that you want for that, um, highly visible part of your community?
And then my next question is, once this is, uh, moved over to industrial, it can be used for other industrial uses if it turns out that the truck driving school is not a success there. It could be sold, and it's already then slated to remain as an industrial space.
So, within the, um, Comprehensive Development Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance, we, of course, have our different zonings. Within those zonings are different allowable uses. So, anything that fits within that, um, you know, not just the truck driving school at this time, uh, which the applicant intends it to use for, but for whatever reason, if the property's eventually sold and a different user wants to use it with something that's compatible with that zoning, they would not need to come back to the city to seek, um, any kind of permission to be able to do that.
Thank you very much. For all of those reasons, I will be voting no.
Anyone else other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Please proceed. Oh, excuse me.
He's first.
Yep. Hobart did ask to go first, and then we'll come to Councilmember Fears.
That's fine.
Please proceed.
Uh, briefly, if I may, uh, address the city manager and/or Mr. Arroyo.
Please proceed.
I have a question on the, uh, vehicle storage. Um, it says any proposed equipment shed should be on the final plan review and meet non-residential design requirements. If we approve this, can they just come get a building permit later and put buildings up?
Yes, they would be able to. As an industrial site, they would have to follow the non-residential design standards for any, um, structure.
Yeah, okay. And this is, this property is literally adjacent to 291. Would the entrance or exit onto the property be on 291 or on the other, that other road?
It is currently on 291. There is a road, it's not really an access road, that doesn't actually get to that property. Could it potentially in the future, possibly? But right now, there's only a, or basically a ride-in, ride-out along 291 is the only access that they have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Arroyo. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Um, I can't imagine, um, this being a good fit for that property or being the gateway into a, what's otherwise residential or an otherwise tree-lined, uh, highway. I know we're not likely to build much along there, uh, but I think I'd rather have nothing than a concrete pad with a bunch of ripped-down trees and noisy trucks until they, until it's figured out a way to sell it to somebody else or put up a bunch of metal buildings that then are right along the side of our highway, right by 24 Highway and 291. I, I just don't think that's consistent with where we're headed as a city. So, uh, for, for the reasons, uh, Councilmember McCandless stated, and some of those of my own, I also will be voting no.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Um, so, very early on in my working career, I worked for some total of about 10 days at, for a trucking company in a, in a facility, just like what we're, we're envisioning here. Um, and, um, I'll just say, not, no, no connection to, um, the applicant here, but that is not the kind of, uh, facility I would like to see in that location for the reasons that we've talked about already, and based on my experience. So, I'll be voting no as well.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, I don't know exactly who to direct this to. I mean, is there any infrastructure that's going to that property now? Sewer, water, storm?
Like, we can defer to Mr. Arroyo on that.
So, currently, there is not. Um, it, it would be possible to get water. However, they have to go through several different properties. Uh, sewer is not currently available, and, um, as I mentioned, there's really only that one access off of 291, the kind of the ride-in, ride-out.
Is, is a portion of, of that property undermined by the underground system?
We believe so, yes. We do.
So, there's probably highly unlikely that there would be much built on top of that, given the substantial undergrounding that's taking place there with, with the tunnels and the underground networking that's through there?
That is our belief.
And then on, then also with no utilities, no infrastructure, it is very highly unlikely something that would be built there if that industrial site zoning would not, um, proceed as, as a training school for trucking?
It would be difficult to get it there, yes.
Well, those would be the reasons why I'll be voting yes for this, is that this is part of something that we can use this land for, for a local company who is trying to better, um, our citizens to be trained to drive trucks. who is trying to better, um, our citizens to be trained to drive trucks throughout this country and through our community.
Thank you. Anyone else? Further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
No.
Hobart?
No.
McCandless?
No.
Mayor Rowland?
No. And the motion fails two in favor, four opposed. Uh, this takes us to our second public hearing. And this is information, our new information-only public hearing. Mr. Arroyo, please proceed.
Thank you again. This rezoning was considered by Planning Commission also on October 24th of this year. Planning Commission did vote in favor of this rezoning. Uh, these were some unconfigured lots between Timber Creek Ranch, Single Family Subdivision, and the Regency Heights, Single Family Subdivision. Uh, the rezoning would allow these lots to make a seamless transition with the R6 Zone Regency Height Subdivision, and I have no new information to provide.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
A public hearing for the application by On Dr. Pollard Development requesting a rezoning from R4 Single Family Residential Low Density to R6 Single Family Residential for five properties along Old Mill Road. New information only.
Thank you. That'll close the public hearing, and now if you can read the ordinance, please.
Twenty-three, one-twelve, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District R4 Single Family Residential Low Density to District R6 Single Family Residential for five properties along Old Mill Road in Independence, Missouri. Second reading.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three, one-one-two passes six in favor, zero opposed. This will take us to a full public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Arroyo, please proceed.
Thank you again. Uh, this code amendment was considered by Planning Commission on October 24th of this year. The Planning Commission did not vote in favor of this code amendment. Uh, this is the amendment that updates various aspects of Chapter 14, Article 9 of the UDO, uh, relating to historical designations. Uh, it includes some text updates for mailings and references to code articles, and it does include some procedural changes to help streamline the process for applicants seeking, uh, designations from historic landmark overlays and conservation and historic overlays. Um, I have no new information to add to this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Arroyo. Uh, this is a full public hearing, so would anyone like to come forward and speak in favor or in opposition, or information purposes only? Anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or information purposes only? Third and final call. Anyone want to speak in favor of, opposition to, or information purposes only? Seeing none. We'll go ahead and hit the gavel, close the public hearing, and open for discussion with the councilmembers. Yep, we do. Please proceed. Madam City Clerk?
A public hearing for the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code relating to the historic conservation overlay.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
So, this doesn't affect any of the code's work. So, for example, if there's a, a building and they have a historic designation already, there's a certain procedure for them. If they are asking for historic designation, this will just skip the Planning Commission, and it would have input from the Historic Commission, correct?
You are correct. Much like I explained with the EDIC earlier this evening, this is another effort to try to expedite uh, some of the procedural processes within City Hall.
So anybody who wanted to modify a building would still have to go through all of the regular permit processes and abide by codes, et cetera?
They would still have to pull all the requisite permits currently required by City Code today. Yes, ma'am.
And have any of these come before Planning Commission and been denied, or have they always just, that's just been one more stop on the train, it's always been approved? Do you know of any?
Uh, i- in my tenure with the city, I am not familiar with any that were previously denied by the commission, nor am I familiar uh, in preparing, uh, this UDO amendment of any that, um, failed to receive the appropriate approvals.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Please proceed.
So, Mr. City Manager, please?
Please proceed.
Um, just to be crystal clear, so we have currently a scenario where if someone wants to, um, do something with the, uh, historic building of this nature, demolition or, or whatever, then, um, they go first to the, to which one? The Historic Commission or the?
For a, for a demolition.
Well, or, or other action, I guess.
So, um, in, in this case, we are, we are just seeking to streamline the process for those that are applying for the designation itself.
Oh, for the, to be a historic property, okay.
Correct. So, in that case, uh, if you wanted to get your residence, your, um, bed and breakfast, um, your building, um, registered, or even a district registered, right now, code requires that to go to the City Planning Commission before it then comes to the City Council for final consideration.
But doesn't go to the Historic Commission?
It does go to the Historic Commission, is what the Heritage Commission.
Historic, then planning, and then City Council, right?
Yes, sir.
And this would take the Planning Commission out of that process, correct? Okay. Um, and, uh, and you're not aware of any scenarios where we've run into issues in that regard?
We weren't aware, are able to find any, um, where, you know, any adversity or denial was encountered. The, let me rephrase that, or a denial. Part of the reason for bringing this forward is that, um, you know, having another group that this has to go through sometimes presents barriers, not by the folks who, um, so admirably volunteer to serve in these capacities, but, um, you know, if a group is unable to meet, if there are scheduling issues, if there was, um, some kind of screw-up with the public notification process, um, it can unnecessarily delay and extend the process for people who are waiting for approvals from the city. So, um, that, that is the motivation behind doing this, to try to ease the, uh, regulatory and administrative burden uh, for those going through the application process. And again, to Councilmember McCandless's point, this doesn't materially change um, the process for modifying your building, doing, uh, any kind of construction or remodel or rehabilitation work. This is strictly for acknowledgement of a historic building or a historic district.
So, a question, I know next week on study session, you're going to talk with us about the, um, boards and commissions.
Yes, sir.
Um, and question, I guess, that I would have is, is it, is it important that we deal with this tonight for any reason, or would it be reasonable to wait till after that we have that discussion, you know, uh, next week?
I'm not aware of any, um, time-sensitive issue associated with this, um, so, you know, it's not like we're waiting, you know, have a glut of applications pending.
I guess the other question is, is that, let's say that in the discussion of relative to the, um, the boards and commissions, you know, we do reach a, a conclusion to, um, combine some boards or something to that nature. Does that complicate things if we already have this in place, or don't we just have to go back and change it again probably at that point, or?
No, because we are, my, my perspective on that would twofold. One is we are removing, um, one of the groups that currently has approval responsibility in the process, so we, we take that out of the formula. Um, the other thing I might mention is that my presentation next week, uh, the two resolutions that are associated with that, one is to establish norms of behavior, operating procedures, policies, uh, for, for our boards and commissions. The other one is to take an intermediary step of asking the council for your consensus to further explore consolidation of the board. So it's not, um, consolidating any boards at this time, it's presenting on why we think it makes sense to further explore that at this time, but does not seek to take action to consolidate any of the current boards and commissions, uh, presently existing within the city structure.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Madam City Clerk, please read the ordinance, please.
Twenty-three dash one-one-zero, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance, Chapter 14 of the Independent City Code pertaining to conserv- conservation, historic district, and historic landmark overlay. This item addresses item 4.2. G in the 2023-2024 Independence Action Plan. Second reading.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three, one-one-zero.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
No.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Rowland?
Yes. And twenty-three, one-one-zero passes five in favor, one opposed. Madam City Clerk, please read twenty-three, one-zero-five.
An ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2022 through 2023 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19340. Second reading.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three, one-zero-five.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three, one-zero-five passes six in favor, zero opposed. Uh, Madam City Clerk, please read twenty-three, one-zero-six.
An ordinance auth-, I'm sorry, twenty-three, one-zero-six, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the contract with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to provide financial assistance for the epidemiology and laboratory capacity enhancing detection expansion grant program for the period of July 1st, 2021, through July 31st, 2024, amending the 2023-2024 budget, accepting additional funds for the period in the amount of $370,128, authorizing future change orders for additional funding and/or time extensions for the same project, and authorizing certain future appropriations. Second reading.
Thank you. Uh, further discussion on twenty-three, one-zero-six? No further discussion on twenty-three, one-zero-six. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three, one-zero-six passes six in favor, zero opposed. Please read twenty-three, Madam City Clerk, please read twenty-three, one-zero-seven.
Twenty-three, one-zero-seven, an ordinance amending Section 4.01.003 of the City Code pertaining to dangerous buildings. Second reading.
Any discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So, Mr. Walker, this is only related to city-owned buildings. Am I correct? For dangerous buildings?
I'm going to ask, uh, Tom Skanel to come. He's worked very hard on this, and I would, I would like to have him, um, provide a little overview for you.
Maybe I should rephrase. Mr. Skanel, could you give us an overview of the intent of this ordinance?
Absolutely. So, the intent of this ordinance is to speed the process up in which, uh, there is a city-initiated demolition of a dangerous building. Uh, whether that is a, a building that, um, has caught fire and the city needs to step in and tear that building down, or whether, whether that is a building where the city has exhausted all of our avenues to try to get the property owner to address that dangerous building. Uh, that is our preferred method. The last method that, uh, that we wish to employ is the city stepping in and, and tearing that down. Unfortunately, that does happen, and so uh, whenever we, we do that, we only want to exempt, uh, the city, uh, if we are going to tear down that, that building. Uh, so it's a city-initiated demolition, that that would be exempt from, uh, the Heritage Commission re- review. As part of that, uh, historic preservation review, the historic preservation manager within community development has, uh, authority and, uh, reviews all demolitions, uh, before sending those on to, uh, the Heritage Commission. So this would just, again, as, uh, the city manager had, had mentioned, would just, uh, exempt the city from, uh, that Heritage Commission re- review for a city-initiated, uh, demolition.
So what would be the normal process if a building is tagged dangerous? The, the owner of that building has the opportunity to remediate it and get it taken care of, so it's no longer a dangerous building, and they have a certain amount of time, there's a notification process. Do they have any kind of appeals process that they can come and have a hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah, so, li- like what you described, there is, um, notices that get sent to the property owner. If there's mortgage ho- holders, they get identified tenants, all those things, and there's, and, uh, so there's a 10-day notice, uh, there's also a 30-day notice, and then after that, then it gets set for an admin hearing in which the property owner again is notified that, uh, there is a hearing with the building official and the building in- inspector regarding the dangerous building case, uh, in which you are the property owner of, and, um, at that hearing, the building official, uh, issues hearing orders, uh, generally, you know, repair. Uh, if they do not abide by that, then, uh, the city has to evaluate, um, and look at our resources to see first if we have the funds to address the, you know, to demolish that. If those hearing orders aren't made, then the city can step in and demolish those, those buildings. But it is quite a lengthy process, and the property owner is involved.
And can you just speak a little bit to the Old Mill Building, because I know that, um, Ms. Baker brought that up, and, and we had to demolish it, and can you just talk about the why?
So the why behind that is, uh, within the dangerous building code, um, in emergency situations when, um, certain buildings are, uh, deemed, um, an emergency by the building official, the city can, uh, bypass the notification requirements and go, uh, straight to the demolition. In this, in this case, uh, there was that report that was done that showed there was uh, quite a significant, um, deficiency in the structure of, of that building.
So my understanding is, had we repaired it, there would have been almost nothing historic left about it? Because we would have had to replace almost all of the structure itself, and the cost was prohibitive. Is that a fair assessment?
If that's okay, Madam Councilmember, I'll, um, add a few things to, to Tom's excellent overview. Um, the, the study that the city had commissioned, uh, was done by a local, uh, independence, uh, architectural and engineering firm uh, to do a structural condition assessment as well as a probable construction cost for rehabilitation of the building. The conditions at the building were deemed by this firm to be such that, uh, and using their terms, in essence, the house will be stripped inside and out, and new finishes will be applied to the interior and exterior surfaces. So essentially, we would have been building a new Old Mill office. This thing would have lost any of the existing, um, materials associated with it. The probable cost, and this is just an estimate, was $375,000. Uh, presently today, we have over $9 million of deferred maintenance at our other historic sites. Um, sites like the Bingham and the Vale and the 1859 Jail and the Chicago Alton Depot, all of which draw cumulatively of over 17,000 visitors a year. So knowing that we have these tourist sites that actually are visited by folks, um, but have significant deterioration and are in severe need of over $9 million of deferred maintenance, we chose to prioritize, um, putting our meager available funds towards that rather than building a brand-new mill office for nearly $400,000.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thanks. Um, well, Tom, I want to give a big shout-out to-
Well, Tom, I want to give a big shout-out to Eric Fitch, if you could pass that on. He does a great job working with our team to, to move these dangerous buildings along, and your team does an excellent job. Unfortunately, we are confined by the laws and state statutes and, and that thing, our U.S. Constitution that gives property rights to those individuals. We just have to go through the steps to do that. So anything we can do to help streamline this? I would argue that the first and fourth are probably the largest lion's share of, of demo buildings and city-initiated demo buildings. We've had several this week, couple more coming next week as well. So anything to keep this moving and streamlined, and a big shout-out to Eric and his team.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three-one-zero-seven.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three-one-zero-seven passes six in favor, zero opposed. Madam City Clerk, please read twenty-three-one-zero-eight.
Twenty-three-one-zero-eight, an ordinance amending Article fifteen of Chapter four, Rental Ready Program to be effective January one, two thousand twenty-four. Second reading.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So I've spent a fair amount of time looking at this particular one, and I'm just a bit confused as to how this is going to actually work for the benefit of both the city and the citizens. I'm concerned about a tenant that might, you know, get caught in the middle. And so I'm wondering if we could, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this and discuss it at a study session so that we can get some additional information from the city manager on how this has been actually, the details about how it's going to work. Because I just wouldn't hate for any citizens and tenants to get caught in the middle of something between the city and the landlords.
Okay. We've got a motion to move this to a study session. We have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to move this to a study session. Mr. City Manager, my question is, if we postpone this and move it to a study session, will we still meet the January one, two thousand twenty-four date?
We would need to amend the ordinance. So current city code would still apply for all of the provisions that would be modified by the proposed ordinance. Because of the council's posting requirements, we won't be able to get it on for next week's study session, but we would be able to add this to the January eighth study session. And then depending on what decisions are made and the appetite of the council, we would obviously then modify the effective date of the ordinance.
But it would, but it would, my question is, would it put you or your staff at risk by not hitting the January one deadline that you've prepared here?
No more risk than we're at today. No, no, sir.
Okay. So it'd be fine to do that? Because I was thinking about just, you know, having an emergency and having four people vote on it to go on next, next week to discuss, if you'd be prepared for that.
I think we'd probably benefit from a little time to put a presentation together. And then off the top of my head, I think we, we do have a pretty substantial study session planned next week.
That's true.
So I think moving this to the eighth is not only appropriate, but will give us time to have some more thoughtful dialogue in my weekly one-on-ones with the council to get more feedback about thoughts and concerns.
Okay. Any further discussion on moving twenty-three-one-zero-eight to January eighth study session, two thousand twenty-four? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, call the roll on twenty-three-one-zero-eight being moved to the January eighth, two thousand twenty-four study session.
Mayor, I'm sorry. As, as a practical matter, if on, we, we can add it to that January eighth, but it would still be appropriate to move this second reading to a council meeting after January eighth? So, so we understand you all want to discuss it on the eighth, but in terms of actually moving it, we can't move it from this agenda as a second reading, you know, to the, the study session agenda. So what, what the motion I would request is that you, it may motion to postpone the second reading to January sixteenth, which is after the January eighth study session. And then Mr. Walker will add it to the January eighth study session.
Then that qualifies your notice, your notice requirements, and we're all good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So a modification of the amendment, have it on the January eighth study session, and then on the January sixteenth? Or is January, is that the right date?
Yeah, that's correct. It would be-
We're going to postpone this to the January sixteenth.
It's January sixteenth, yes, that's correct.
Okay. And postpone twenty-three-one-zero-eight to January sixteenth, and also discuss this item at the January eighth study session. I just want to make it clear for everybody who's listening on board or might be watching on TV that everybody's on the same hymnal, same page. Okay? Any further discussion? All right, we've got a motion and a second for that. Any further discussion? Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll to postpone twenty-three-one-zero-eight.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three-one-zero-eight is postponed to the January eighth study session, and then it'll still be on the agenda for a second reading on the January sixteenth regular meeting.
That's correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, please read twenty-three-one-zero-nine.
Twenty-three-one-zero-nine, an ordinance amending Article one of Chapter five of the city code, Business and Occupation License, to be effective January first, two thousand twenty-four. Second reading.
Any discussion on twenty-three-one-zero-nine?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
So just for clarification, Mr. City Manager, this is making sure that anybody who is getting, a business that is getting hooked up to utilities has an active business license. That is the intent of this ordinance.
That is correct. We want to ensure that businesses that are operating in the city are doing so by the city code of independence.
Very good. Thank you.
Anyone else have a further discussion on twenty-three-one-zero-nine? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on twenty-three-one-zero-nine.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three-one-zero-nine passes six in favor, zero opposed. Madam City Clerk, please call, excuse me, please read twenty-three-one-one-three.
Twenty-three-one-one-three, an ordinance approving a final plat for Regency Heights Eleventh Platte in Independence, Missouri. Second reading.
Any discussion on twenty-three-one-one-three? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Stewart?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Fears?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
McCandless?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Twenty-three-one-one-three passes six in favor, zero opposed. This takes us to first readings. Madam City Clerk, could you please read the first readings?
Twenty-three-dash-one-one-four, an ordinance amending Independence City Code, Section five-point-zero-one-point-zero-one-eight, License, Denial, Suspension, or Revocation. First reading.
Please proceed.
Oh, twenty-three-dash-one-one-five, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract to Black &amp; McDonald in the amount of eight hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-five cents for twenty-four highway improvement steel pole installation and making necessary appropriations. First reading. Twenty-three-dash-one-one-six, an ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four budget, which was approved by ordinance number one-nine-four-five-three. First reading.
Thank you very much. Then this takes us to Councilmember comments. Councilmember Stewart, we'll start with you.
I have nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Perkins?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick thing. Last, last week, living windows, that was definitely fun. You looked great. Chief, you looked good, too, back in that green. Did a good job. So it was kind of a second fun kickoff for the holidays and for Christmas, one of my fun events. So that's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fears?
Yeah, same thing. Enjoyed that. Took my two grandkids to living windows and, and introduced, we have some new neighbors that moved in from Africa. They don't speak any English. They speak Swahili, but we introduced them to living windows as well. That was interesting, I think, for them. And I'm not sure how much they got out of it, or even if they figured out what we were doing. But that's okay. And also, just a shout-out to all the fourth graders who sang in the Christmas concert on Sunday. That was a great event as well. But we'll let probably others say more about that, so that's all.
Thank you, Councilmember Fears. Councilmember McCandless?
I just wanted to let folks know, you may be getting a mailed survey from the city. This is the Citizen Satisfaction Survey. It goes out to a random sampling of households. So if you get it, please answer it. It's information that really helps us think about planning. It also is an opportunity, there are a few questions on there that are going to directly touch on the general obligation bond. If you don't get a survey, don't worry. There'll be an opportunity for you to give feedback, and we'll share more about that as the time comes. That should be mailed out here in the next couple of weeks. I wanted to give a shout-out to Truman High School, who their band was invited to Philadelphia for the Thanksgiving Day Parade, and they did a beautiful job. You can see it on YouTube if you're interested. Always like to give a shout-out to municipal services. They filled seventy-five hundred potholes this year. A very thankless job. Nobody pays much attention to the pothole they don't see, but we really appreciate, my tires on my car deeply appreciate all those potholes being filled. I know that the mayor will talk about the mayor's Christmas concert, which was terrific. And Mr. Hobart, I hope that you are feeling better soon and are able to join us back on the dais again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Hobart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Mr. Councilmember Perkins reminded me today, I've now had COVID for seventy-seven thousand times, I think. So that's where I'm at these days. Some good happenings in and around the fourth district. Not that they're good, but it was a good thing that happened. This past weekend, or in the last couple of weeks, the city did a joint clean-out of a massive, I don't even know if you'd call it a camp, more like a small village behind the sandbar up on Forty Highway. The city combined forces with KC MO. Mr. City Manager, who all, what departments were involved in that?
We had staff from our community development department there, monitoring that situation and assisting, as well as members of the police department there as well. Not sure if we had anybody. Sorry if I left anybody out, but I know-
Sometimes municipal ser-, yeah, sometimes municipal services gets involved, too. I didn't know if they were there. Anyway, sorry, thank you. My apologies for interrupting, but that also has led to the beginning of hopefully a, a good relationship, an increasingly good relationship with KC along that border. And it has led to an MOU that will hopefully lead to an increased effort with homelessness along that Forty Highway area. This is, this is something that Councilmember Perkins and I both deal with. And while our KC counterparts are really good folks and do their best, Kent City's really big, and sometimes that border gets a little overlooked. So they're making a real effort to help us out and to help out their far, far edge of town. So we sure appreciate that. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hobart. I also want to talk about the living windows. They did a great job there. Chief Dustman, if in fact no one knew, he was in fact the Grinch. He was an incredible Grinch, so much so that it actually bothered me for about two or three days afterwards. And I asked myself, how did he become such a great Grinch? How did he understand the mentality, the mindset of the Grinch to perform at such a high level? And as I began to ask that question and ponder it for the entire weekend, I began to understand that, ah, it makes all the sense in the world. He has studied the deviant mind for a lifetime. And he reached deeply to understand, his understanding of the deviant mind, in fact, to be an outstanding Grinch. And I don't mean to disparage anyone who might in fact have been the Grinch for the city in the past, but Chief, I think you clearly have won that, that opportunity going forward. Yes, I, I think it was, it was extraordinary. He did an extraordinary job. I also want to give a shout-out to our shelter folks. You did a great job, Christina. You brought Scooter and Candy to the living windows, which I thought was a great thing. And not only did you do that, but both Scooter and Candy were adopted. And I just love to see events where we bring the shelter animals to events, and they get a chance to be adopted. And so in the, in the memory of Bob Barker, please spade and neuter your pets. The mayor's prayer breakfast is tomorrow. If any of you need seats, we, we do have a couple of seats, because I think we had a cancellation of a table. So I know there were a couple of people that asked me. So Kim, before we leave, I'll bring you up to date on that. The, the, the fourth graders did a great job this year on the Christmas celebration. I know Councilmember Fears was there, Councilmember McCandless was there, and I just thought they did an outstanding job. It was, and they had one fourth grader that we are all excited to know her well before she wins American Idol. She was outstanding. Would you agree? I mean, she was absolutely incredible. So it was just terrific to, to do that. Those are the ends of my remarks. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to add to this occasion?
If, if the council indulges, I did have a little bit more than, than usual, but I think there's some important updates for the council and the community as well. First, a few years ago, the city partnered with the National Park Service to deed the land that sits immediately to the west of the transit center and just to the north of City Hall for the construction of a new Harry Truman Visitor Center. I want the council and the community to know that next week, the Park Service will begin some soil remediation of the land over there. So you may see some fencing, you may see some soil being hauled away and new dirt brought in. That is part of the preparation work for what eventually will be the new Truman Visitor Center over there. So I wanted everybody to know what that is. Also, as you're going about town, you may notice at the former Frontier Trails Museum, which will now be the home of the Missouri Model Railroad Museum starting next spring, some facility work there. We've brought down some of the old steel beams that didn't serve a functional or a structural purpose. They just outlined some of the territory of the old Wagner Gates Mill Complex. Those had become unsafe and, and beyond their useful life. So we, we've brought those down. We've also refinished the concrete patio that leads you into the entryway of that facility. So as you're traveling down Pacific, just gives you a more visually appealing look at one of our, our city facilities there. I also want to make sure that the council is aware, as part of the police overtime study that was done a few years ago, one of the key findings of that was modernizing how our timekeeping is done in the city. Starting December the seventeenth, the city will be live on its new digital timekeeping system that is going to greatly enhance not only our efficiency with which we operate as a city, but the accuracy and effectiveness with which we're able to track employee hours worked, our payroll activities, et cetera. So we're happy to report that that has, has moved along as well. And then on the general obligation bond front, we have, you know, shared with the community and the council some of our ideas, and we are still welcoming any input that the community has. But would like you to know that we have closed a request for qualifications to select a firm that would do the Justice Center Master Planning Project and help us better understand our space needs for our police department, as well as selected a firm to perform the Rec Center feasibility study, which would help us know what a community recreation center would look like and what the operating costs and staffing and such would be, so we can have a more informed discussion with the community as well. So those projects do continue to move forward, and we'll be excited for community input. Thank you for the indulgence of your time to share those updates.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And with that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you all.